I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
I'll second it. I'm moving second and for discussion. Aye.
Aye.
Close some sign motion. Rich.
Morning. Doing some bleeding today. Do some things and then we can't get, we send out. Told you guys, we switched up two moderators of ones and burns one's gonna go up or has done up, I don't recall.
Aren't working.
There he is.
He's awake right now. Pfizer on.
It's not liking it.
Booty.
So who, who did first and second on agenda in minutes?
I did first.
And second. Thanks.
Anything else for his face?
No, no.
So any drainage. Okay, DD eleven, except, except amendment number one to reclassify annexation.
That's just the amendment that's the, the city one here, right?
We took those few individuals off and then we decided to go with a whole bunch of them at five dollar minimum. And that gets tied into. We're reasoning that's DD thirteen and that drops into eleven, so that's why we gotta be DD eleven.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Yep.
A motion to accept the amendment, Andrew, to reclassification and meditation.
I'll second it.
For the discussion. Just looking. Yes, any questions? Take a motion to approve the claims.
I'll make a next to approve the claim.
I'll say it. Moving second. For the discussion. And on.
Aye.
Payroll. Personal. For the group payroll claims.
Second.
Second for discussion.
That's sure. Dispatcher jailers. The payroll eligibility.
I'll second it.
I'm moving second.
I don't know if you guys got the email with.
I did. We did.
If you look through it, there's really nothing new except I've had zero complaints this year. It's the first time ever. Wow.
From people?
Yes, yes, that somebody has is in violation of.
Okay.
Not just weed laws.
You were spraying a weed they didn't like.
Internally, we found some poison hemlocks. I don't know if it's a good year for poison hemlock or not.
I don't know.
It might, might be a problem coming up here. We'll see.
One of those guys might have passed away though.
Oh.
That's no.
I can think of, I can think of one of them.
Cause that was southern weed that's been moving north.
I don't know about that one.
I'm not sure. I've read about it. I'm not exactly sure. I don't even know what it looks like right now.
It's got purple stems with spots on.
Okay.
If you saw it, you'd know it. You've probably seen it before.
Well, it's possible, right?
Yeah, white, white flowers. Otherwise, one big thing is that we did get our sprayer again. Some of us.
You went by my place.
Yes.
Working good?
Yeah, at first I was a little leery of, you know, there's a learning curve, we'll say that.
Sure.
And, and then one of the things in here for the cost of herbicides for this year, it is double what our normal is. If I spray with the foret, I have enough to do next year too. I freaked out because we were starting to use chemical like crazy before I was dialing it all in, so I learned some more. I didn't want to run out, so we've got it. In stock, it's just, and we will use more, we'll cover more ground. It's just.
It's not bad.
No.
Yeah, it ain't going down in price.
And it is, I mean, it's still more efficient to go out with the foret and spray on everything. There is a little more chemical wasted when you spray the truck, but the area covered is the amount of time is so much.
Yeah. It's safer.
Yeah, yeah, that's for you. That is for sure.
Right, yeah.
Other than that, yeah, we'll be getting into planting the ditches that are getting dug out, do some burning for snow and for plant growth and we'll recut trees again this winter, of course. When I do, covers whole county, so it's, yeah, so I'll, I'll try to think of some things. We get some more in, yeah, the truck is doing great. It'll be.
That'd be a big point.
Right, already has been. Great when the crops came out and I don't have to worry about on the fence line so much. We've just been rolling right along.
Yeah, it's kind of nice.
Like they cover a lot of territory.
And a little false spraying is a good idea to catch up on some of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're still out with the oil based spray. We could spray it just like it has leaves. It's, okay.
Yeah, well, it's still translocating.
Yeah. Any other questions?
We said that wild parsnip is now becoming a concern in the county. What kills that?
Two forty kill. It's just, it's hard, it's harder to get it when it seeds, it's seeded out everywhere.
It is, it's a life cycle.
Yeah, Boeing promotes it to buy any else, so you get the rosettes this year, then you're okay. You don't see them, they're down small, so.
I don't even know what it looks like, so.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Oh, do you?
So it looks a little bit like, you know, Queen Anne's lace looks like, or it's opposite. It's got the same kind of flower.
Yeah, white, wild.
It's got a yellow flower instead of a white flower.
Wild carrots.
And it's, when it starts, it's thick.
And don't let it touch your body.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Oh, really?
So I'll still say if you, I'm not picking on a bigger county, but there's places I can see right to the line where you've been attacking it and where they haven't had the ability. I think they're probably starting.
Well, well, they were at a conservation, had a district two meeting.
Yeah.
And I was at that presenting with my spray truck and I talked to their guys over there. They're not attacking it yet.
They've already got a spray truck, I think.
Yeah, theirs isn't quite as intense.
But you can definitely see to the line where, I mean, I'm not saying you're running the battle, but you're putting up a good fight.
The hard surface roads I focused on up till now, hopefully I get out some rattles, get it better too.
Throw some poison.
They say you can, you can work and mess with it at night if you want.
I'll stay on the sidewalk in the grass.
Good idea. All right. We'll take a motion to accept the recommission.
A motion to accept the recommission.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mike. The report for signatures.
Oh, I didn't print it out.
I got. Thank you much. See ya.
Did you guys all get a copy of the, of the menorah?
Gosh, I didn't see that.
I don't see it.
I don't see it either.
I thought I sent it to you guys. It's just what the report of what happened last year, basically.
Yeah.
Have you already looked at?
Yeah. To approve the annual.
Motion for, is there a second?
I'll second.
So moving second, I mean, further questions. Here and run. All's favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same time. Motion, okay. Melissa.
I don't really have a lot. I'm gonna start working on the budget and next steps for the master plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I keep my report?
Yeah, I had to respond to you. They did get it done.
Yeah, it's more. Any questions?
Mixer's up and running.
Yeah, supposed to be a better, better designed one or? No, same one for this year.
Okay.
He didn't want to switch to the, he said, there's no reason to switch to the other style until we go to the other style.
Oh, okay.
Said it costs quite a bit more to put it in this time?
Yes.
Yeah, to pull it well, usually I just get a quote, put it in.
Went from twenty-five hundred to six thousand, I just noticed. Yeah, the mixer itself only went up by seven cents, but that thing doubled, over doubled, so I thought it must have taken a lot more labor to install it or whatever.
No, I think you just get back at us for not paying part of that bill last week, that's what I think.
That was their fault.
That was their fault. I, I agree, but it's still cheaper than hiring a company in North Florida to come to the force.
Right.
So we gotta pay all that travel time from North Dakota.
Yeah.
But they didn't, we can go Thursday, so with the top. Everything else is going good. Well, we watched last
Cause I got that with the bill for Good Dale was.
Yeah.
He holds it, okay, that's what I thought, wasn't pretty sure of that, but.
I always sage.
Yeah.
They hold on by all the.
You're good.
On the, I guess that field across on the south side of the ditch.
Awesome. I've been by there, so.
Yeah. Each of the public before, so it actually worked out really good. You know, it's kind of soft, they just did it. We do, we inject it.
Oh, it's injected.
He sprays his, his machine spray the top and cover disk it.
Yep.
Top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we have to. Well, I got twenty-four hours, but it's, it's slimy, so you can't get out in twenty-four hours, so we do it all in one, in one shot.
Yep. That's a good idea.
Oh, with everything else going good?
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chris. All right. John. New discussion. But they'd have a chance to talk with Corey from cancer. Hold him, if they have any concerns, to give him my number and call or I got your number too, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And I don't know if he's gonna try to get a special meeting together, but he's gonna try to see if you get it, if you're okay, so. Hopefully, cause all their next meeting is. Might have a special, I'm not sure. I haven't heard.
Refresh my memory. I remember us talking about that. What was that?
They hadn't signed it.
The only city out of seven.
That's right.
Cause it comes within two miles of the city limit, so they have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
Well, otherwise, that's the only thing we're waiting on, right?
Yeah. As now, I really have multiple questions. We had tabled it till today, correct? Action also we need to.
But Dan said not to.
No, not to act on it, so I don't know if we need to.
So I'm just trying to get to him. I can't remember if we said nine o'clock or if we set a time.
And that's the only thing we're waiting on is that. In silence, does that tomorrow?
Sounds like it.
One of the questions was, was concerns of turbines being out tomorrow.
Just not do it really.
No, they had enough to do, that's what.
No.
I mean, that was the only question we got, other than.
Cause we're just, we're making sure we're bringing in the new turbines out here.
Yeah.
Into this plan. Over a week's period.
Over a week's period time, not in like an hour, half hour, something like that, we're using a good, good soaker, cause anybody's got corn left, they'd be in the field within days and then it wouldn't make any difference. Just makes it way safer out there. Then it fires over the weekend, I don't think so.
One little one, I think we have. Actually called in by one of the deputies.
Didn't see any smoking.
We've got several call in, done some burning. They've just been watching it really good.
We're waiting for Dan or two, we can do the department ads or, yeah, I think sure.
Is worth continuing or? No, we are not.
Again, I already shut it off.
Way, way above.
It just put me on again. And my computer's cycling.
It's possessed.
I don't know, I'm trying to see, yeah, I'm unmuted, but I don't see the.
We have audio again since we plugged into you, so.
Just me or?
Looks like it's just you AJ. I don't think it's picking up the owl.
Hi Joel.
His eyeballs aren't on right now again.
Yeah, maybe we've got a glitch in the owl. Might have to restart it or something.
How do you do that? Push the button?
Just unplug it, plug it back in again. It's a, it's highly technical.
And there's other places where I see eyeballs.
Oh, okay, he's coming at night.
Is it coming up on your machine AJ?
Yeah, switching to it now.
Okay. Suppose the owl might have been stuck, who knows?
Could be. Supervisor weekly, we're waiting. I guess why you start.
I had nothing.
I think, wow, okay.
That was quick.
I'll jump where you're going. It has met report or has my team report to and has that meeting, so it's on there for a while and then we had to get off, but the, the report, they had a couple spill, a couple ones spilled that they, there's no issues with. They had a train derail, liquid asphalt, the railroad took care of that. He did talk about the CO2 pipeline coming through North Iowa and any concerns, they really don't have a lot of concerns on it. He said they've got over half the land they need right now. He said it's a very low hazard issue for them. It's non-toxic blood pressure. He said, if you're a soda drinker, you're drinking it every day, so. It's kind of interesting, some of the thoughts he had, but they don't have any big concerns on it. As far as they're at, you know, they're, if they had to act or had to respond to pressures. They're looking at getting the new mercury meter, I think it was, and some new decon equipment. And they're also looking at a RAM analyzer, know what that is? Sure. All right, well, it's. He was going through it as kind of technical to me, but it can, it can, it's able to detect what's inside a container, like if you had a container without having actually sampling it and then driving it to the lab, it's somehow, maybe you know. Yeah, I mean, he said they went to the casino a couple times a week. I don't know if they're analyzing, you know, cleaning up spills or whatever he said, which was kind of interesting, but it's kind of an expensive little gadget somewhere in the probably thirty to sixty thousand dollar range, give or take, but it's. It would be like, you can use them on drug busts too, if you had some unknown substances that are in the jug, instead of having to pull sample and analyze, they can actually just kind of basically beam right through it and it'll tell them what's in there within seconds. So the closest one there is right now is Sioux City, I think he said. Closest team that has one is Sioux City, I believe, if I remember right. So they're, they're considering it, but you know, I, it would be something that. I don't know if they did really have it in the budget right now, but there are some grants and stuff you can go after and also suggested, you know, putting an app into the casino, because it's something all North Iowa could utilize and, I mean, it has my covers a bigger in North Iowa anyway, and it was kind of an interesting little gadget, he said. And I had to get off after that, just a few more things I guess, but that's all I have, so.
I didn't have anything last week, so.
Had a good one, quite a week for once.
All right. I got a couple minutes for Dan, so. Anything else you guys thinking to go on next week's agenda? That we might be at together?
Well, like I said, since we care about the region too, the next thing that I know.
You've got plenty of time for that, so.
Except I'm, I'm assuming there will be some coming out the next week or two as well.
Yeah. I would think so, as long as one of us cover all these mutants somewhere in the.
Some representation somewhere.
Yep. There is, we'll call.
I got that.
Okay.
Are you going?
Um, just as long as you're, you represent us, maybe, what do you think? Okay.
A little bit, I should probably go to that stuff.
Well, you can do dual purpose.
Yeah, I can do dual purpose.
We're gonna do the, you know, we're gonna announce the.
Homer bone.
Homer bone, so.
Yeah, so listen, we talked about it.
So if you represent us, that we're gonna have to put it on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
You gotta go.
Have a great day.
So it must be the eleventh then.
Though. This. Twelve.
No, the, uh, must be the ninth then that AJ was talking about with his other.
Yes, yeah. Nor what are we, supervisor district, northeast supervisor district, yeah, so probably be, he said, maybe getting to Wednesday, seventh of the ninth, maybe Thursday, cause they have open meals Saturday. Yeah. And that's a good meeting.
Can you sign that again, please? I started signing and I shouldn't sign.
Oh.
Might have a nice clean one since he's actually doing the report.
Yeah.
That's been nice to have him.
It is.
Yeah, you're going up there.
Where? At the office. On my office.
Yeah. Thank you.
Say. Understand, which are counties of the conservation director, right?
Yes, I do. I heard that Friday, Saturday, Friday. Saturday.
We just.
Yeah, we're still recording. That's nine o'clock. See if anybody's trying to get in.
What is I, R V N stand for?
Our roadside vegetation management, I think.
Okay, there's too many men.
One of the world of acronyms.
Oh, it's terrible. Figured out.
No, heavens, no. Every time you think it close, they throw a new one up here.
Yeah, COVID did that.
When I first came on, it was like, what? I just seen that one. I was wondering what it was on that report.
Just gonna try to jump on in mine.
I think so.
Okay. Another call.
There we go. There, John.
Good morning. I am here. Can you hear me?
Luckily, you had a rough morning.
Understood.
Yeah. So what should we be doing here? Where are we at?
Well, why don't we just give a a bit of a procedural recap? To where you folks are at? And I'm gonna attempt. Bear with me here to be. Date specific. So yeah, here we are. It is. My understanding that the county took action on September nineteen. To introduce a proposed urban renewal plan amendment to your already existing. Urban renewal area. That plan amendment includes both the addition of real estate new of ground to that existing urban renewal area. And in addition to that, the plan amendment also contemplates the authorization of several new urban renewal projects to be undertaken by the county. From there, that September nineteen action, I believe identified October seventeen as the date for a public hearing on the proposed plan amendment. Because there was new ground being added to the area. And because of the fact that some of that real estate is situated within two miles of the city limits of various municipalities around the county. It is necessary by law for the county to receive consent agreements or joint agreements. As the law calls them, signed by each of those implicated municipalities. And in order to include any of that territory that is within the two mile buffer of any of those cities, that joint agreement must be executed by each respective city. Last I heard from the county auditor, all of those consent agreements had been received back with the exception, I believe, of one from the city of Kenneset. Has has that changed at all, Jackie?
No, not yet.
Okay, so. At this point, when whenever the board takes up this action formally next, if you move forward with the addition of ground to the urban renewal area. Unless you have that consent agreement from Kenneset in hand. We will need to leave any of that real estate in the Kenneset two mile buffer out of the urban renewal area addition. Everything else relative to that procedural requirement would be ready to 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 proceed. And of course, if you get the Kenneset consent agreement in the interim, then it'll be a green light all across the board on that front. In addition to that, because you were adding real estate. It. Was also necessary to submit a copy of the urban renewal plan amendment to the county planning and zoning. That is a requirement under the law in order to review land use related issues. That plan was submitted timely to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is my understanding that they did meet in quorum with a formal meeting. As the law allows, the Planning and Zoning Commission has submitted a set of comments to the Board of Supervisors. We've been provided a copy of those comments. They they are fulsome and detailed. At the at this juncture. You have held your public hearing on October seventeenth. And then I I believe so you you folks probably know better than I, so please correct me if this is inaccurate. But I believe at that point, after the public hearing, in light of the extensive comments that had been received from planning and zoning. The board determined to not take action to vote on the resolution which would give final approval to the urban renewal plan amendment. Approving those projects and adding the real estate. In addition, you you were missing at least two, maybe three, I think, at the time of those city consent agreements. So adjourning the action made a lot of sense on that front as well. So. Where we're at today, you all have checked the procedural boxes for what the law would require to move forward with the approval of this amendment. With the exception of that Kenneset agreement. You have done the planning and zoning comment process. You have received consent agreements from all of the other cities. You've held your consultation session to which the school districts were invited. Right, Jackie? That that occurred back at the, I think, the beginning of October. And so and you've held your public hearing. So all of those procedural boxes have been checked. What still lies ahead of you as a board is the adoption of a resolution giving final approval to this urban renewal plan amendment. And I think to my mind, the big, big question that is probably in front of the board at this point is as much a policy related question as it is any kind of a legal formality related question. You are required, when you add ground into an urban renewal area, to make a finding as a board of supervisors. It's it's a legislative finding by your board. As to whether or not the property that is proposed to be included in the area and the proposed urban renewal activities that you'll undertake on that property. Whether or not that is consistent with the general plan for the development of real estate in the county. That is the very same issue that planning and zoning for counties that have those commissions is asked to comment on in an advisory capacity. Clearly, as we noted earlier, you have received comments from planning and zoning. And I think it's important as supervisors that you review those. Take them under advisement in advance of taking up the final resolution in which you will vote either to approve or not approve the proposed urban renewal plan amendment. Keeping in mind that there there is a finding embedded in that resolution and it's required by law that you, if you approve it, you're making a finding that the ground being added and the proposed urban renewal projects and activities and objectives for that real estate is consistent with that general plan for the development of the county. Most of which is formally formally memorialized in county comprehensive plan and your zoning map. So that's where you're at procedurally, I think. It's based on. Based on our advice, I don't I don't think today would be the day to take up final consider that consideration of that resolution. I think maybe the soonest we would advise that you take that up. Next week's board meeting. Of course, it certainly is your prerogative as a board. You could pull it off the table and take action on it today if you wish. We we had advised Jackie when we discussed with her briefly last week that today might be a good day for kind of reflection on where you're at, where you've been. And a chance for you folks to, of course, ask us any questions you might have about the legal process and and what where we've been and what may still be required of you going forward. So I'll stop there. I just covered a lot of a lot of ground. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them. I think my colleague Amy Bjork, who's been working diligently on your on your process here along with me, has joined the call as well. So Amy and I are certainly happy to address any questions that you folks may have.
We're kind of in the place we need to be, right, John? Other than waiting on Kenneset.
Because otherwise we have to rewrite before.
So we just have to eliminate that two miles around Kenneset then. Is that is that the way we're seeing that?
If they refuse to sign or.
And how right. Yeah, if they if that agreement, if that consent agreement is not going to be signed by the time you folks are ready to take up the resolution approving this plan amendment and the addition of property. Then we need to to be prepared with a modified real estate description that eliminates any of the ground we were proposing to add that is situated either in the Kenneset city limits or within the two mile buffer radius outside of Kenneset. To the extent that any of the projects that you were proposing to approve were to be cited on that real estate. You know, the the exclusion of that ground could affect your ability to move forward with those projects. But it's my understanding that that's not the case, that none of your immediate projects were going to be happening in that buffer. But I you there are folks over there who will know that for sure better than I do.
Wouldn't be, should it?
I wouldn't think it would be, is it?
Just under that city limit line is Kenneset.
It's just on the south side. It used to be. I can.
Actually, I don't think it would because.
It wouldn't come into the pipeline.
Three eighty, that's four hundred streets to the south gravel road like where Bucks is at. That's four hundred. So that's two miles. And the logistics park is already a part of that plan. So which is north of three eighties. So that wouldn't matter. That's already in the plan. If there's any development going on there, which that would be, well, it wouldn't have to be, well, we'd have to a project, I guess, there. But we've already got that in the area. We would just have to develop a project if we're gonna with anything there as well. So I don't think it will change a lot. I don't think any of our bridge projects, if they are, we could strike those from.
Me to verify what whether we did, whether we included the road project coming into Kenneset from the east was on that list or I don't recall.
Right.
It wasn't. I'd have to look.
I don't think it was. So I I don't think it would really, and if there was a small bridge or coal project, it would be. You should use open money on something like that. If it wasn't that area, I don't believe it is, so.
And this just boils down to the fact that we did, we put all the right right aways in the whole county in. That's what did this two miles to the cities.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, that that's right.
So then what about addressing the zoning?
Yeah, we'll have to we'll have to address that probably.
Does it have to be something written or what?
No, no, and I I just want to reiterate that the role of planning and zoning with respect to this statutory process is advisory, the way the legislature has written the law. They they do ask that the commission be given a copy of the proposed plan document, which you did. And the law gives them the opportunity to submit advisory comments to the Board of Supervisors, which they did. From there, the the law is silent. There is no mandated response on the part of the Board of Supervisors in this regard. Contrast that with the consultation process with the school district, for example, that you were required to do as part of this process. The law tells us with that process that if the county receives advisory comments from the school district or districts. Then you are required to go through a process of responding to them. Making sure that they know when the public hearing is being held. The the law gives quite a bit of detail in that regard. With respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is simply set up to make sure that you all have an opportunity to get advice from them. And so the the best way that I can put it is that what you as individual supervisors or as a board choose to do or not do with respect to those advisory comments from your planning and zoning commission is really not a legal formality. But rather a policy related issue. And that's why I I wanted to highlight for you that the the resolution that will be put in front of you to approve the addition of this ground and these proposed new projects, it will include a finding by your Board of Supervisors that everything outlined in this two thousand twenty-two amendment conforms to the general plan for the county. And so you you should be, however you see fit, reviewing that county comprehensive plan, taking a look at your zoning map. Taking a look at what you're proposing to do with this addition of property and these new projects. And of course, taking a look at the advice that has been provided by planning and zoning. And ultimately, making a determination about whether or not you need to modify this twenty-two amendment. Or if you think after that review that, yes, this is in conformity with how I as an individual supervisor read the general plan for the development of the county. You can vote yes and and move forward. That that finding, the power to make that legislative finding is vested in you. That finding, the power to make that legislative finding is vested in you as a Board of Supervisors. And in no one else. And the the courts have typically been quite clear. When when there have been lawsuits and appeals cases at the Supreme Court or Court of Appeals. On these types of matters. That the courts are not interested in. Replacing the legislative judgment of you local elected officials. So if there is a, what I call a rational basis for whatever finding you wind up making. Thumbs up, thumbs down, the courts are not going to be anxious to interfere with that. It the the power to make the legislative finding is vested in. The Worth County Board of Supervisors.
Makes sense.
Really, there'd be no action today.
We need to get Kentsis.
Yes. It would be best.
It would be best. Find out where what they're gonna do.
So hopefully, I've I've chatted with the mayor from Kenset. I'm not sure if they're gonna have a special meeting tonight or not. Otherwise, a regular meeting is on the fourteenth. Which would still affect us acting on this Monday if they didn't act on it yet this week. At least with a yes or no. I mean, that's we need to. Be nice to know.
Right.
Cause yeah, cause you gotta change.
Right, we'd have to change that, at least that part.
At least that part of it. And their regular meeting is the fourteen.
Yeah.
And they had this on, right, beginning of September and had it at their September meeting.
Yeah.
We just gotta make sure that the individual brings it to them and says, hey, we gotta move on this one or the other. Which would be the mayor and you've already talked to him, so.
Best they reach out, they had any questions before the meeting so that we, you know, we can answer them.
Right.
Nobody's reached out to me, so although the mayor.
It's just gonna wait on that.
Yeah, so we have to do any other action today, table and or extending it or anything like that? Or are we good, there done?
I'm trying to recall that when when you tabled it the last time, you identify a specific date that you were gonna be. Taking it up again.
Bumped it out two weeks last time.
I think I I think it's probably a decent idea for you folks as a board to go ahead and entertain a motion to. Identify which board meeting you will formally take this up again, and I. I would think you you wanna I do that either next week or the following week.
They get two chances at it.
I mean, you should can do that, too.
And the debt part of it, I don't think really matters at this time because we're not gonna be able to certify anything by December first. We'll have to get the ball rolling for the road stuff so that we can do it for next year.
Right.
Jackie, can can you remind me, cause I I don't. I don't recall specifically, was there one project or another in this plan amendment? That you all had been hoping to get an internal. Loan done before December one of this year?
Well, it was the one point three million on the highway one oh five. But that was, I I didn't totally understand how that was gonna work, cause you said something. Yeah, you told me to talk to our external auditors. And it was something that was gonna have to go back into past years and stuff like that. I I just didn't know how I. Didn't totally understand how it was gonna work.
Yeah, okay, but I to my recollection, tell me, tell me if I'm wrong. Wasn't that, was the highway one oh five project. At least in part already approved in prior amendments to the plan? Or am I misremembered?
Project was.
I'll have to dig into my stuff.
Yeah, I I thought I thought so too, so. If if that if what we just said is true. And the highway one oh five project has been approved in prior versions of the plan. Let's let's have a conversation, Jackie, about. Whether or not it it might make sense to go ahead and move forward with the internal loan. If if that's still something you're trying to do for TIF collections in fiscal year twenty-four. Why don't we, why don't we try to have a conversation about that this week and see if there's something that we could. Okay.
Otherwise, it was just for roads and that. I think the earliest Rich is even gonna be working on it is June or July, probably. It was what, spring letting?
Yeah.
So I I think if we got something rolling after January one, we should be okay there.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk to Heidi today.
Okay.
So if you wanna go with the fourteenth or the or the seventh or the fourteenth or the twenty-first.
What about guaranteeing this loan? Is that gonna affect, we're still waiting on some stuff there too?
Yeah, as far as I know, when I can check with those guys, but it's.
We got a lot of balls in the air.
Very fast or something on right now, so I would say if. I know, I was talking about the twenty-first is. Special meeting, then it'll be fourteen, the fourteenth will be the meeting, so that would give them a chance.
That would give them a chance then.
If they haven't acted at that time, then we're gonna.
Absolute worst case if we can still get something done if it's kosher with Heidi. Would it be a problem move our meeting to the fifteenth, Tuesday morning?
Well, Heidi won't be able to get anything done for new debt.
Okay.
It's, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, I didn't I didn't know if that would make a difference, if that would help or make it or not. Then we could move ours one day. The day after that, after Kentsis, we do the fifteenth, but that's fine.
Yeah, you know, if you you can gamble with the seventh or you can, or I mean, the fourteenth or the twenty.
Probably just go twenty-first.
And that would either give us time to change the map or.
Right.
Or.
On the fourteenth, then on my Tuesday, we'll change the map.
I I'll I'll put it this way, cause I I don't see all of it. With perfect clarity, but. Here's what I can tell you for sure. If if you could do the fifteenth. That would allow Kinsat the chance to have their regular meeting and hopefully approve this. And if you were at a point. On the fifteenth when where you knew you needed to get some internal county borrowing. Approved before December first, you would still have time to do that. If you wait until the twenty-first, there's no way you're gonna meet the public hearing. Requirement if you choose to try to do a last minute approval of some kind of internal loan. Which is fine with me either way. I just wanna make sure you're aware of those time constraints. I agree completely, there's no way you're going out and doing external borrowing. Between now and December first, there just is. Not anywhere near enough time to think we're gonna get that done.
We'll just, we'll just get done what we can.
Yeah, that was a long-winded way of me saying it wouldn't be the worst idea in the world to do the fifteenth. If if your schedules allow for it and it's not too much of a pain.
I'm sure mine is okay.
Fourteenth.
We're gonna set the fifteenth as this, as our meeting.
Well, no, we'll table it to the fifteenth. And then we'll have to have the meeting on the fifteenth.
Oh, so have a Tuesday meeting instead?
And I mean, that that would be.
This way, if they pass that their meeting Monday night.
Oh, okay.
We could get from them.
Take a motion to table this until. Fifteenth of November.
Do you still want a morning meeting or an afternoon, trying to find out what they did the night before?
Is this gonna replace the regular meeting then that?
That would be the other thing, that's really not an action to change the meeting date here today, so. And if that matters or not, we just, we, does that screw you guys up for paperwork or any approvals or?
Claims, anything like that or? I have me both days too.
Cause it'd be pretty short on Monday and then Tuesday would be more action, of course.
Oh, and we're gonna be getting into the fifteenth might actually work better, cause then we can have our canvas that day too.
First action name of this table is to the fifteenth, take motion table this until.
Motion table till fifteen.
Move it second, any further discussion. So then for action, I mean, we were talking about changing the date, you know, we want to have one meeting on Tuesday or you want to have a meeting Monday and Tuesday.
With the election stuff.
So skip the one, the fourteenth. Same time.
Yeah, if that works for you, Jackie.
As long as they get back to us, the meeting information, what they did.
All right. Appreciate it.
You bet. Nice visiting with you folks. You know how to get ahold of us if any questions come up. Just let us know.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Have a good day, folks. Bye bye.
There's nothing else, then. Take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
To a second.
Second it.
Then move in a second, any further discussion, hearing on all's, say aye.